Versus Hackensack. Also, we spoke about Zisa versus Hackensack and we also spoke about two workers' compensation matters, Sroka and Revy. So I just want to put that on the record as per our usual practice.
Okay.
Thank you.
It looks like Leo's in attendee if I look at that list. Maybe you gotta promote him.
Yep, I just sent him the option to be promoted. So let's see if he just needs to accept that.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, he just rejoined his panel, so.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
I made a motion to close the executive session, so we just need a roll call. Or I need a, I had a motion. I think Kathy was first and Stephanie was second.
Okay.
Allison?
Yep, roll call, Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
Okay, I need a motion to close the Cal meeting, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
Okay, with that, would everybody bring up the flag, please, Frank? Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
Mayor, we need to read the statement first, Open Public Meetings Act.
Sorry, read your Open Public Meeting Act, David, I'm sorry.
This meeting is being held in accordance with Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA ten four dash six et sec notice having been published according to law with a copy on file at the city clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall. And roll call.
Roll call for this meeting.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Here.
Councilmember Taglia.
Yeah.
Councilman Carol.
Here.
Mayor LaBras.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Frank. And there are no proclamations and presentations tonight, so I need a motion for the approval of the minutes of the Cal of the executive and regular meeting of August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
And I need a motion for the approval of the minutes for the meeting of September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Upstate.
And Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
Okay, with that, we go right to our city manager, Mr. Caruso, for the city manager's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things, just a reminder, the city has officially launched our Facebook page, Instagram page, and now we've added a Twitter account. So please search the city of Hackensack's website, or you can follow the links for both of them to get the most up-to-date and accurate information and advisories. The Health Department will be offering the COVID nineteen vaccine by appointment only on Tuesdays through the end of November. Please refer to our flyer on social media for details regarding the time and location. The city of Hackensack and the Main Street Business Alliance are hosting a food truck Fridays until October eighth. The location is on the green from eleven thirty to two thirty P M. The city along, again with the Main Street Business Alliance, will be hosting a fall event called the Maine Music Arts Brew and Fair on October ninth. That'll be at Atlantic Street Park, right by the Hack Pack. The city and ICal are hosting Dancing for the Cure in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is next month. This will taste, take place also on October ninth in Faschini Park from eleven to one P M. The details will be posted on social media as well. The city, the city will be hosting our annual Slam Dunk the Junk event on Saturday, October thirtieth. Registration to participate will begin on October fourth and can be found at www.hackensack.org forward slash slam. Some upcoming fall events will include a pumpkin, a pumpkin carving contest, a Halloween movie night, and our second annual Boo Through at Faschini Park. Those details, again, will be on social media by next week. Due to the shortage of sanitation trucks, the city had to resume a one-day-per-week garbage collection, which started on Monday, September twenty-seventh, until further notice. Your garbage day will be the same day as your recycling and grass pickup. At the last council meeting, we did a presentation of the COVID nineteen mini grant program to help small businesses and renters that were affected by the pandemic by making mini grants of one thousand dollars available. We're pleased to announce that the Small Business Mini Grant Program is now accepting applications. Details can be found on the city website, and we strongly encourage any small business of twenty-five employees or less operating in the city of Hackensack to apply. We plan to have the Renters Assistant Program, which is an additional program rolled out sometime in the next two weeks. More details will be provided as we get closer to the live date. A few updates on some things from previous meetings. One hundred prospect, the parking spaces have been added. The ordinance amendment is on docket for tonight. Regarding the street lighting on James Street, it's been reported to P S E N G for inspections and comments, and we will follow up for options to improve the lighting in the area. We're actually waiting for them to come out and do a LED retrofit study to change those street lamps in that area and other areas throughout the city with a more efficient and brighter LED type light. Pedestrian safety at Summit and Passaic Street intersection, the city is aware that this intersection is in need of an upgrade. The city is working on getting a grant to improve the intersection. We have recently addressed lane markings and repainting, and repainted the crosswalks and stop bars at that location. And finally, Fairmont Avenue, regarding speeding. A questionnaire was sent regarding speed humps to the residents of Fairmont Avenue. The majority of the residents were not in favor of speed humps or speed tables. Additional, but in, in furthering that, additional twenty-five mile per hour signs and electronic speed signs were previously added to the roadway and now are in, we are now in the process of paintings of large, slow school zone on the pavement to alert motorists that they need to slow down to twenty-five miles per hour. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Vinnie. With that, we'll start with new business. So it's, and are we adding, we are adding a resolution that's not on the docket tonight? It will probably be going to consent agenda. Is that ready to go? Allison? Allison, can you hear me?
We lost out. Sorry, I was on mute. Yes, the last resolution will be added is Resolution three ninety-seven twenty-one. It is in the consent agenda, and that is the resolution approving Hack Pack Agreement with Hackensack Performing Arts Center Incorporated to operate the city's Performing Arts Center.
Okay. So with that, new business, Resolution three eighty-five dash twenty-one.
Resolution three eighty-five dash twenty-one is final adoption of ordinance number forty-five twenty-two-one and ordinance to amend chapter one sixty-six of the Code of the City of Hackensack Uniform Construction Code Enforcement, establishing fees to be charged for approval of tense subject to U C C review. We already had the public hearing on it, and we tabled it at the last meeting, so we would need a motion to take the resolution off the table.
So I need a motion to remove the resolution from the table, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
Now I need a motion to open this to the public?
No, we did that already. This would just be.
That's right, we did that already. Okay, so we just, I need a motion, I need a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
Okay, be it resolved, the city of Hackensack, of the council of the city of Hackensack, county of Bergen State of New Jersey, that ordinance number forty-five dash twenty-two-one has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Okay, thank you. Resolution three eighty-six dash twenty-one.
Final adoption of ordinance number forty-six twenty-two-one and ordinance to amend chapter one seventy of the Code of the City of Hackensack Vehicles and Traffic to add and delete a bus stop in Prospect Avenue within the city of Hackensack. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi. Anyone from the public who'd like to speak to this ordinance and this ordinance only?
Please give your name, your city of residence to the clerk. Hearing no one from the audience, motion to close.
There are no hands raised, yep.
Okay, motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
Need a motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, county of Bergen State of New Jersey, that ordinance number forty-six twenty-two-one has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Onward to Resolution three eighty-seven dash twenty-one.
Final adoption of ordinance number forty-seven twenty-two-one and ordinance to amend chapter one twenty-one of the Code of the City of Hackensack Peddlers to prohibit the sale of goods and services on city property without authorization. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
Anybody from the public who'd like to speak to this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Give your name.
There are no hands raised.
What's that?
There are no hands raised.
Motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
Now I need a motion to close, sorry, motion to adopt the ordinance.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, county of Bergen State of New Jersey, that ordinance number forty-seven twenty-two-one has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution three eighty-eight dash twenty-one.
Final adoption of ordinance number forty-eight twenty-two-one and ordinance to amend chapter one seventy of the Code of the City of Hackensack Vehicles and Traffic to add a new handicap parking space in section forty-nine point two, parking for the handicap. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
Anybody from the public who'd like to speak to Resolution three eighty-eight dash twenty-one? Please raise your hand on your device. Wave anyone, Frank?
No hands raised.
Motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
Motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, county of Bergen State of New Jersey, that ordinance number forty-eight twenty-two-one has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution three eighty-nine dash twenty-one.
Intro, introduction of ordinance number fifty twenty-two-one and ordinance to amend chapter one seventy of the Code of the City of Hackensack Vehicles and Traffic to remove a handicap parking space from section forty-nine point two, parking for the handicap.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
Be it resolved, be it resolved of the above ordinance being ordinance fifty twenty-two-one as introduced is now passed on first reading and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held October twelfth twenty-two-one at eight o'clock P M or as soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. And that the city clerk be, and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution three ninety dash twenty-one.
Introduction of ordinance number fifty-one twenty-two-one and ordinance to amend chapter one seventy of the Code of the City of Hackensack Vehicles and Traffic adjusting the no parking area on Prospect Avenue near the intersection of Beach Street.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance fifty-one twenty-two-one as introduced is now passed on first reading and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on October twelfth twenty-two-one at eight o'clock P M or soon thereafter, as the meeting can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. And that the city clerk be, and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution three ninety-one dash twenty-one.
Resolution authorizing rejection of all bids for Pine Street Improvements Project.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilman Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
Resolution three ninety-two dash twenty-one.
Resolution authorizing change order number one to Neglia Engineering for Prospect Avenue Mid Block Crosswalk Improvement Project.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
Resolution three ninety-three dash twenty-one.
Resolution authorizing the awarding of a co-op contract for the purchase of a twenty-two-one Chevrolet Tahoe sport utility vehicle.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
And Resolution three ninety-four dash twenty-one.
Authorizing payment of bills.
Need a motion to pay the bills.
Offer.
Second.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
So Steve, on this Resolution three ninety-six twenty-one in the consent agenda, are we pulling that for now, or Vinnie?
This is the, this is, this is the Rice Resolution?
Yes.
I, I believe, yes, we were going to pull that for the next meeting.
Okay, so. And Vinnie, you make sure you reach out to the powers that be to discuss this tomorrow with them.
Absolutely, Mayor.
Thank you. So consent agenda, we actually have two items then.
So the consent agenda consists of Resolution three ninety-five twenty-one, authorizing Health Department refund and the newly added resolution, which is Resolution three ninety-seven twenty-one, which is approving the agreement in principle with Hackensack Performing Arts Center Incorporated to operate the city's Performing Arts Center.
Okay, just want to make sure that we're clear that we're approving this in principle. That it's not a finalized, but that we are moving forward with it. We want to show good faith by showing this through resolution.
Yes, and we'll, we'll, we'll work to finalize it, you know, immediately upon adoption of this resolution.
Yes. So need a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
And Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that, Allison. With that, I need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Van Ridenberg.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Hi.
Councilmember Taglia.
Hi.
Councilman Carol.
Hi.
Mayor LaBras.
Hi.
Okay. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand, and Frank will, one by one, go through whose hands raised. And we'll move forward from there. Who do we have first, Frank?
The first person to raise their hand is Margot.
Okay. Margot Cooper. Can you hear me, Ms. Cooper?
Yes, I can.
How are you?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Can you bring the timer up, Frank, please?
Fabulous. The items which were just discussed, especially one pertaining to the Tahoe sport utility vehicle. My question was going to be, evidently, I tried to raise my hand to say something, but evidently we jumped over to the next item. Number one, what will be the purpose for this vehicle? And evidently, from what I noticed, it's being in cooperation with another division or however it's set up, and what is the price? Why are we getting this vehicle? What is the price and what is the purpose? Because I wasn't quite clear when I read that.
Okay, I'm looking, I'm going back to my paperwork, but I believe it was just the resolution, so there would be no comment on it till public comment. The only time you get to speak during, before public comment is on a adoption of an ordinance. So I believe the lease vehicle was, I'm looking for it right here, hold on.
So I didn't know whether or not we had leased it or exactly what the particulars were.
So it's authorizing the awarding of a co-op contract for the purchase of a twenty-two-one Chevy Tahoe. And I will let the city manager speak to it from this point on.
Okay.
Hi, yes, ma'am, it's a vehicle, it's going to administration, and it is on a co-op estate contract, so it's not a lease. It is purchased, it purchased outright.
Okay, what is the purpose?
It's for administration.
Of whom?
Replacing a vehicle.
You mean the regular police cars that we have, is that what?
Not a police car, it's not, it's not a police car, it's for, it's for the administration.
Oh, I see, okay. All right. That will suffice for the moment.
Anything else, Ms. Cooper?
No, not right now. I do, thank you.
I thank you. You have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Okay, enjoy.
Thank you. Frank, next person up?
And next up, we have Peter.
Sir?
Peter Marcus Annie again. I guess you answered my question partially by saying that the once-a-week pickup is really a temporary thing, is that correct?
Well, I would say, Pete, it's probably a long-term temporary thing, because we're waiting, these other trucks are not actually going to be ready for quite a while. Because I don't know if you remember last time, it takes forever, the body comes in one piece, the chassis comes in another, it's all, has to be put together. So it is going to be, this is kind of for the long haul, we're probably looking at once-a-week pickup through the winter, and probably still will have to rent some trucks into spring and summer when those things are probably, you know, hopefully done. But we have more, we're purchasing the new trucks for the three we just lost.
Yeah, I was confused initially, because we used to have once-a-week pickup, and then we started twice a week in the summer. And then we went to once-a-week in the winter, and then I had completely forgotten that we really have once a, twice a week pickup all the time now. So I was a little bit confused, but I did want to make a few comments on it, and I see the timer's going down as I was listening to you talk, John, so maybe I could just make a few points. And number one is, the default condition was, on the once-a-week pickup, we would go back to the, what was the normal pickup day, which was coincidental with the recycling day. And I was trying to explain a lot of that to my neighbors. And then at work today, I picked up the issue that had to do, going to dear old Ted's recycling calendar, God bless him, he worked so hard on it. I noticed, for example, that Zone Eight has pickup on Mondays, or rather Tuesdays and Fridays, it's their garbage day. Their once-a-week pickup would have been Friday. But then I realized that the recycling day on the calendar is Thursday. So that would certainly be confusing, because people wouldn't really know what the correct day was, but just, I just wanted to point that out. It's not a big deal. What I think is more important is perhaps the way it's communicated. I know we have a social media now. I hope that won't take the place of the city website. I hope the information will be redundant that's put out there so that people can see it regardless of their access. And along those lines, uh on the Nixle calls, I'm getting calls from the city that don't have your name on, John, but they're messages from you, but they're no identifier. I've almost deleted a couple of calls. One of them had to do with the uh with the uh once a week pickup. Uh, some Nixle calls come through and they clearly say City of Hackensack. Others say just a phone number. Uh, and I think the ones that say just a phone number typically tend to be messages from you. So I don't know whether you're trying to bridge to your personal phone call to get things out. Maybe it's an emergency basis like in times of the flood. I don't really know. But I just wanted to point that out. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And I will pass that forward to our emergency management personnel. Because it always should say City of Hackensack.
Yeah, most of the time they're robot calls. They only got the phone number.
Yeah, they really should, uh if it's from the city and it's a Nixle, it should say City of Hackensack. I did have, I had a City of Hackensack call come through the other day as potential spam on my phone, so. Shouldn't say that. So uh Vinny, we have to deal with them on that to make sure that the people, this way people will pick it up and hear it. And just to, before we move forward to note on on something Pete said, um, the city has tried tremendously hard to uh get the messages out. We do Nixle calls, we do reverse nine one ones, we put it on the website, we put it on social media. But still, it's amazing how many people don't use any of those. Or uh, you know, they don't use social media, they don't go on the website or or check anything and uh the telltale sign where all the garbage cans were out on a day when they shouldn't, shouldn't have been after all the messages went out. So we have to figure a way to reach out to the public. A little better way to make sure that uh they know. Okay, next person, please.
Next up, we have Anthony Griffin.
Sir? Can you hear me, Anthony? Mr. Griffin? Hello, Mr. Griffin, are you there?
He needs to unmute himself. I've asked him to unmute.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I'm unmuted now?
Yes. Okay, good. Go ahead.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Yeah, um, yeah, I live on the Espinade on the border of Maywood and I, you know, I have a question about the flooding. I I don't know if this was discussed earlier. I I saw there was some uh discussion about sewers and drainage. So, you know, we, we got really impacted badly here at Suburban Terrace condominium. So I was just wondering, are there discussions about the Brook? Uh, that runs in the conduit under the Espinade and it runs up to uh, I, I don't know, I think Van Sawn Park. Uh, has there been any? Has that been on the table at all? What's going on in this uh part of Hackensack as far as drainage?
That wasn't, that wasn't part of, I'll wait till you're done because you, I don't want to use your three minutes. So I don't know if you have anything else, Mr. Griffin.
No, that's it. I was just wondering if there, if it's been looked at, if there's any plans for mitigation of the flooding that happens here on the Espinade.
Well, I gotta be honest with you. I I'm in the same path as you. Espinade, I live at the end, I'm on Brook Street, down the end of Burn Street, which is kind of like an extension of the Espinade going towards Borg's Woods. Uh,
Right.
Uh, Coles Brook is not underground by me. It's above ground.
Um, yeah.
The impact over here was was insane. Um, very similar to what you had, but I must say, you know, I'm here forty-two years in my house and that's the first time I've ever seen Burn Street and Espinade in that shade. Um, that said, that doesn't mean something can't be looked at. Now, Coles Brook is controlled by the county, so we could certainly reach out to them. I I'm certainly sure after this flood, it needs to be cleaned out so that, to avoid any other further problems. But by the time Coles Brook got to Route Four, it was no longer a brook, it was a raging river. Um, and it took out an apartment complex, Madison Arms, that those people will not be returning to those buildings anytime soon. They're, they're totally out of their building. I think we evacuated over a hundred people from there. And uh those buildings were red tagged until further notice. So yeah, it's a, it's a problem. Unfortunately, you know, there's no easy way to say this, but this was determined to be a five-hundred-year storm, not even a hundred-year storm. It's the largest uh rainfall we've ever had in a small, short amount of time in recorded history here. So, you know, that that plays.
Yeah, that's another thing I was wondering. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, that that plays a lot into it. Like, you know, the discussion we were having before was in an area that floods when you have uh what we call a uh a one-year or two-year event versus this flood was like a five-hundred-year event, but uh, you know, we don't chronically flood, like Espinade doesn't chronically flood all the time like this. I'm sure you can, I don't know how long you're here in Hackensack, but.
Well, I, Irene was bad. And that was the only other time that it filled up. It wasn't as bad as this, but it it got pretty full. Uh, this time it reached my door. It actually got into my unit a little bit and the unit below me. So
Yeah.
Uh, this, this was the worst I've seen in twenty-some years.
Yeah, it was definitely the worst I've ever seen. Like I said, I'm here forty-two years. I've never seen Espinade flood to that extent or Burn Street, which was five feet deep at one point.
Um, right.
You know, the spots we were talking about before are literally, these people have twice this year lost, you know, I mean, their basements were full of water up to the top step. So it was, it's a different situation on a project we're working on bringing up storm. Water pipes from the river, it's a very large project, but we would definitely, we're keeping an eye and I will make sure that the city manager reaches out to the county to make sure that uh the Brook is addressed. I don't know how they would clean out underground, but certainly above ground.
Well, the, the end of the conduit, I, you know, I took a peek once uh during one of the storms and it, it looked pretty cluttered. I don't know how much that affected the flow uh on the Brook down on through Paramus, but it looked like it needed to be cleaned, but you know, with Ida, nothing would have helped. That was just such a heavy rain, but you know, for the lesser rains even, it seems like, you know, it's something that needs to be kept an eye on.
So I'm going to direct the city managers on, obviously on this call, on this meeting, I'm going to direct him to reach out to the county and uh make sure we, they.
Mayor, if I can.
Yes.
Um, we through uh to the DPW superintendent and myself, we already reached out to the county regarding Coles Brook. Um, and we, they're in the process of scheduling. Uh, the county coming out there to start to get some of the debris that's out of the Brook. And uh, we're gonna, we're going to assist them. That was part of the, the issue with them that they needed some help from the DPW. So I approved that uh with Mr. Anglima. And additionally, uh Suburban is looking or has, is having a meeting with Deputy Chief Nile and our OEM coordinator to seek some FEMA mitigation uh funding to try and do something with the banks of that river. Uh, I'm sorry, that Brook, to try and mitigate it a little further. That's not something that's going to happen overnight. But we are starting the process to, to get funding to try and correct some of the issues with Coles Brook.
Okay, yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you. And one, and one of the other, real quick, I'll finish with this. One of the other reasons we experienced flooding there is, you know, Summit Avenue was on one side of the Espinade and Maywood Avenue is on the other. So Espinade is at the bottom.
Yeah, we're in a group.
You're getting water uh run down, just like we do down here on Brook and Burn Street on both, both angles. So that, that contributes a lot to it. All that, all the, all the water running down the streets of Maywood flow all the way down to Coles Brook. So. All right, with that, thank you. And uh.
Mayor, if I may, also maybe, maybe just have them take a look at the catch patients and stuff down in that area. I don't know, you know, if anybody's looked there recently, but you know, that could be, there could be another contributing factor to some of that as well.
Yeah, because they run actually, they dump into Coles Brook a lot of them, so.
Yeah, so maybe take a good look at that too, or have them set that up. And that might help as well. Mr. Griffin?
Thank you. Next person, please.
And next up, we have Annette Gankowski.
Yes, go ahead. Net, can you?
Good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Yes, good evening. Um, may I ask a question about um ordinance fifty-one dash twenty twenty-one? The additional parking space on Prospect and Beach? Am I re-
I'm looking for my cover sheet. Hold on. Look, you want to speak to that, Vinny?
May I? Yes. I would, I'm sorry.
The city manager is going to answer that question.
Oh, um, Mr. Cruz, so how many spaces are being added?
No, I didn't.
It, am I reading it correctly that you're adding a space or two?
This will add, this will, this is the city attorney. This, this will add some space. Um, I think the way they're, they're doing it is that they're going to add some additional parking on that block, but they're going to leave about a twenty-three foot space right in front of a Hundred Prospect building for no parking because it's directly in front of the entrance. But you'll be allowed to park from a twenty-five feet, you know, from the intersection, which is the state law for a stop sign, back to the entrance of uh the Hundred Prospect Building. Then there'll be that twenty-three feet of no parking. And then they'll be parking, um, uh, I guess it would be uh further south of that for another hundred and five feet or something like that. So I believe that is more parking than currently exists.
Yes. Would it be two, three spaces or?
I couldn't tell you that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, I'm only asking because there's a problem already on Prospect, the length of Prospect Avenue regarding people that are parking illegally anyway in the no parking areas. And it, it becomes a visibility issue trying to enter and exit the various buildings or at the intersections. So that was my concern. So I just wanted to be sure that I was reading that correctly. Because I'm sure I'll get questions from the condo co-op people regarding that, but thank you.
You're welcome. And I believe this came forward because of their, that built particular building. And Kathy, I think you could speak to this as well, has a
Ah, okay.
issue. Where they don't have enough spots as they do apartments. I know that's really not the city's problem, but we're trying to help out. And like you said, people are parking illegally anyway, so.
Yeah. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Never.
Okay, next up, we have Justin Mignona. Mignona?
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, Justin Mignona. I'm the Hackensack Professional Firefighters IFF twenty-eighty-one president. I was just inquiring uh the Rice Resolution and it got glossed over. If it got, again skipped or pulled, I was just trying to find out why.
Uh, it didn't get glossed over. It's just up for further discussion, sir. Um, something, you know, we have some legal counsel brought some very, very important uh you know, questions to us that we need some answers for before we just vote on this. So, you know, I realized there was a uh I can't remember what the clause was. Steve could probably remind me, but the, this is the city manager's been instructed to reach out to the union and firefighters tomorrow to go over what we'll, we'll be discussing and how we're moving forward with this.
Yeah, it's strictly illegal. It's strictly a legal issue upon the city attorney's advice.
What was that? I, I wasn't able to, it was illegal or illegal?
No, I, I said it was strict. I said it was strictly a legal issue based upon my advice as the city attorney.
Okay.
So we just have to, we can't move forward with it till we make sure we uh check all the boxes and make sure we're, we're safe and, you know, good standing.
All right, understood.
All right.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you. Next person, please.
There are no more hands raised. If there's, and then one just, I always, every time I say it, then somebody always pops their hand up. Uh, there is one more. It's Bridget Rucker.
Ma'am?
Yes, good evening. Um, the reason I'm, I only raised my hand to ask the question to the council and to the city manager is based upon uh the council meetings. Uh, I called this morning to the clerk's office and was told that the city council meetings were being zoomed because it was a recommendation that you guys were following from the governor. And I asked where that um recommendation would be placed on the city's website if there was any. And I kept trying to ask her, I don't, I don't even know who I was talking to. And she kept saying it was a recommendation. Um, you know, due to the COVID, X, Y, and Z. And I said, well, where's the recommendation? Can you, you know, point me in that direction so I can actually read it? But I called the governor's office. And there is no recommendation. Because schools are open. Restaurants are to full capacity. The BOE meeting is in person. So what is your reason? Truth reason of why you are back on Zoom? And I spoke to uh what's her name? Her name is Danielle from the governor's office. So that way, you know, there was a, a live person that I spoke to. And she told me to go onto uh newjersey.gov, go onto the COVID nineteen, look and see if there is any recommendations, but she is for sure there was not. So can I get an answer from you, mayor, and the city manager of why you guys are not in a public forum? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I will answer that. There was discussion. I know we went back live. Um, I'm not aware of any recommendation from the governor. I, it is definitely COVID-related, Ms. Rucker. Um, I don't recall having any discussion that the governor recommended this because uh that didn't happen as far as I know. Um, this was decided, we had, we, I, I questioned it myself. I had the clerk's office poll all many local towns to see what they were doing. It was pretty much fifty-fifty, some of them. And this is when things were not as bad as they are now with the numbers. I don't know if you have been watching the COVID numbers in Hackensack, but they are going up tremendously. Thirty to forty a week sometimes of cases. All right, I work at Hackensack University Medical Center, right? We have way more COVID patients that were very, very sick, critically ill with the variant than we really should have. That said, the council and there's other reasons as well, and I'll bring that up as soon as I'm done, but we felt that to be prudent and to be safe, we would stay at uh doing Zoom meetings for now. Believe me, I would love nothing better than to be live and in person. I prefer it that way. But we are playing it safe right now. Um, we also feel it's just safer for the public. But to be honest with you, we've never had as much participation from the public as we have since, and, and Deputy Mayor Kenner Striner brought this up to me, since we've had Zoom meetings. We're averaging, you know, a good twenty, twenty, twenty-five people in the room. And uh, that's a good thing because the public is, is being involved. And it's more transparency, but that, that is a reason, but the, I, to be honest, I know nothing about the governor's recommendation. Um, maybe some of it, one of the clerk's office misspoke, but uh I don't recall anything from the governor's recommendation. So, and I don't think it's funny considering the reason we're doing this is.
It's not funny. The saddest part is I don't think you guys are attuned to one another. You understand what I'm saying? Like your city clerk's office should know, you know, what to say. Because now it just sounds like, you know, a lie was kind of told. And instead of them really kind of finding out or following through to you or the city manager or uh the head of city clerk, that's what I'm trying to say here. I understand about, I understand what you're saying.
This, Ms. Rucker, the fact that half the, half the communities we checked were.
No, I understand about the safety and I'm glad.
It shows there's no government of recommendation. If it was recommended, recommend, if there was a recommendation, it certainly doesn't have to be followed. But uh, you know, we're following.
No, but I'm saying she forced that. She, I mean, I'm just saying, she kept saying that as if that was law, if that was true. She just kept saying it. And I said to her, I don't.
Well, she may have, she may, she may have heard that from, from somewhere else, but it, to me, I don't recall it being relayed to me or I don't, I can't speak for the rest of the council, but.
But she did, but she did say the mayor and city council. So that's what I'm saying. Everybody needs to get, needs to get in tune to one another.
The bottom line is, Ms. Rucker, we're trying to keep everybody safe.
I understand. I understand. I, I would never not want you to keep people safe.
Can I say something? We did have um guidance from the governor's office from the DCA. And it does say, in light of the governor's issuance of Executive Order one oh seven, we have strongly encouraged to conduct all public meetings subject to the Open Public Meetings Act exclusively, exclusively using communications equipment.
Could you please apply that to Ms. Rucker, please?
Yes, I will send it to her. Thank you.
Yeah, please, but can you tell me when that was dated? Because she couldn't find anything in her file and she works in the governor's office.
Yeah, but the, the governor, the governors, the govern, when we say the governor, it means Trenton, basically.
Yeah, it's actually the Department of Unity, the DCA, the Department.
Okay, yeah, so send that to me because then I can call her back and say that you, you know, you sent that to me, but make sure it has a date on it, please.
I actually don't think it does.
No, I didn't, I didn't think so.
But you should have the date.
I'm here right now.
All right, next person, please.
Next up from the public, uh, we have Victor G.
Sir?
Good evening. Um, John, that's, I mean, I understand your position in keeping um citizens safe, but that's no excuse for poor communications from your office. Um, when you make a statement that this is a recommendation um front of governor and it's not true, or you, and you continue to to um continue to say, not you, John, I'm not talking about you, but your clerks.
Um, but I'm going to, Victor, finish up and I'll make my comment. Go ahead.
I mean, that's, that's not what she, what Ms. Rucker asked. And she reached out to the governor's office and reached out to people and they didn't say, um, there's no record of them saying that at this time. They might have said it you know, in the middle of the COVID and, and, and everything we was going through, but they're not saying it now, John. So you know, the thing is, the city manager should do is make sure that they giving out correct information, not just making something up. That's what the, you know, that's what Ms. Rucker is talking about. Go ahead, John. I'm done.
All right, but we're not going to go back and forth after this, but I can tell just.
I'm not going back and forth, John. I just said you, go ahead.
Thank you, but I can tell by, just by the way, the clerk read what she read, that that was not just fabricated, that it wasn't off the top of her head, that she was actually in discussion with the DCA, which is the Division of Consumer Affairs for the state of New Jersey, which is part of the governor's office. Now, when people say I reached out to the governor, I reach out to the governor all the time, but I never, I'm not talking to Mr. Murphy, Governor Murphy, I'm talking to DCA, I'm talking to local finance boards, I'm talking to all different people. To me, that's calling the governor's office because he is in charge of all that. If somebody calls the governor's office directly and say, hey, did you say that? They're gonna say, no, I didn't say that because they don't know directly who we dealt with. So there's, yeah, there is some miscommunication here, but it's, I don't think there's anything intentional or misleading. So the bottom line is, these meetings are being held like this for safety reasons right now because COVID numbers are up. All right, if other towns want to do it differently, I understand that. All right? Believe it or not, I am the one person who wanted to stay live. All right, I'll be honest with you. And council members will confirm it. But this is a democracy and it was four to one and I lost. So here we are at Zoom, right? So um that said, that's, that's where I'm coming from with that. I don't think there was any intentional misleading or any miscommunication. All right, if they said they spoke with the governor's office, they spoke with somebody down in Trenton. That's all I'm saying. Next person, please.
There are no more hands raised.
Motion to close the, are there any letters, emails?
Yes, there is. We have one and it is from Cheryl Jones. Um, her comment is, I would like to propose residential sticker parking for South Main Street in the vicinity of the ECDC preschool. Cross streets are Lodi Street and Broadway. Reason being is that the area residents have been consuming of parking spaces with business vehicles. Recent examples of vehicles include two school vehicles leased to a company in Lodi, New Jersey, one minivan and one minibus, a plumbing van and an extended cab pickup truck used for landscaping. In addition, there are multiple out-of-state cars such as New York, Connecticut, and Pennsylvania. Unfortunately, right after these vehicles leave for work in the morning, staff from ECDC School begins to take over any available parking spots. It has been increasingly difficult to obtain parking even during the daytime hours. I petition the council to extend the residential parking sticker program to the northern area of South Main Street. Thank you.
All right, so here's what we're going to do with that. Vinny, if you could, we have that woman's contact information, I assume?
Yep, I could forward over to the manager right now.
So let's get that over to the manager. Number one, we shouldn't have these commercial vehicles parked there uh during the day or overnight, right? Number two, I thought we had a deal where the teachers were parking in the M and M lot. Am I mistaken on that, Kath? Do you remember? Kathy, you, you there?
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, I don't remember. That's something to look up. I know at one point we talked about it, but I don't know if it was ever finalized.
Well, that building's empty during lots of, during the day. We probably should work out something with the Board of Education. Well, that building's empty during the lots of, during the day. We probably should work out something with the Board of Education to alleviate some of the parking issues down there. But again, we she just ripped off like four commercial vehicles that shouldn't be down there in that area. So we need to look into that and you know, I know we, we set up parking on uh Old Street. We increased the amount of parking by going uh with angled parking there, they could fill a lot more cars and we're doing what we can. So but uh really the manager or traffic needs to speak with this woman to really see what her issue is and what we can address.
I'll take care of it in the morning, ma'am.
Thanks. Any other emails?
That was it.
Motion to close the public?
Offer.
Check on.
Well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Steph?
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, we had a pretty short agenda tonight's docket, but I would just like to highlight um several uh really great projects that were presented at our um committee of the whole meeting this evening. Um, first, I want to thank Erin from, from Suburban for uh the very thorough presentation in regards to the updates to our sewer separation projects. Um, this is the single largest project going on right now throughout the city. Um, and it's important to have the updates available and explained in a way um that we could all understand if we're not a construction or engineer professional. Um, and Erin always does a great job at this, so we appreciate that. Um, a big thank you to Mr. Gelber for presenting his um library, little library initiative. Um, hopefully funded by the Elks National Foundation, um and also to Mr. Trazano and our environmental commission for the Pocket Park Initiative. Um, these are both examples of some really great um grassroots projects put forth by a group of dedicated and hardworking residents um and volunteers. Although these projects may seem small in scope compared to some of the other larger projects that are going on right now throughout the city, um, they are just uh as important, if not more important, because it offers the opportunity for all of our residents to become involved and, and shows how important our volunteers are. Um, and the more volunteers, the better. I know we were talking, um, you know, Mr. Gelber was talking about, you know, building the boxes himself, but then, you know, reaching out to different organizations like the Boy Scouts or maybe some of the schools and you know, really getting everyone involved. I think that's important in the scene for the pocket parks. Um, you know, I know I spoke to Mr. Trazano about, you know, being more of a hands-on with our residents and, and the group and, you know, having them come up with the vision and, and us as a city supporting them. Um, maybe getting some um benches donated in memory of people like they did on the shore. So a lot of different ways to, you know, maybe even the, the boxes, the library boxes, we could do something like that, but it's all really great projects that um, you know, promotes community bonding and, you know, just people getting out outside after this pandemic. I think it's really important. So um, we know the council really appreciates all their hard work and dedication because it's, it's not easy. Um, and I know it takes a lot of work to put forth these initiatives and, and we thank them for that. Um, and that's it. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
You too.
Thanks, Steph. Agree. I couldn't say more. I mean, it's wonderful to see, I mean, you know, having everybody come together in the city and work together. You know, having the Elks come up with some ideas. Uh, we've had the Chamber of Commerce is helping us out with distribution of our business grants. Um, you know, having more hands and especially these volunteers, you know, just shows that we're, we're all working together for a common goal and uh and, and these pocket parks, we've talked about this for a while. The council is prioritizing it and, and getting it to happen for next year. Again, you know, it's a, it's a great use of cleaning up, not only cleaning up these properties, but putting them to good use. You know, they may be little spaces, but they're small spaces that people can enjoy. So um, you know, we continue to enjoy hearing about these things. You know, a lot of people are way, way more creative than I am, let me put it that way. And, you know, they come up with some really wonderful ideas. So it, it was nice hearing about that. Um, as far as the stormwater update goes, anyone who wasn't in the COW meeting that wants to, wants to hear about it, I think it was, you know, it was the first of what's going to be in, always an agenda item on our, our, our committee of the whole meeting. So, you know, the, the, the videos are always posted. It may take a day or so, but if you're interested, take a look at it. Uh, it talks a little bit about what we've accomplished so far and what we're going to be doing right now, you know? And our, our plan right now is that every one of the committee of the whole meetings, we will give a progress report, you know, on what's going on now. You know, everyone sees, wow, that whole street's ripped up. What are those huge pipes? You know, what's, what's happening downtown or what's happening in my street or, or, you know, where what's really going on downtown? So I think this will be an excellent opportunity to keep everyone in the loop, to, to understand why we're doing it, to understand what we're doing it. And to hear about, hey, we've made good progress in one week and another week, wow, we uncovered another problem. But, you know, that's what it, that's what it is when you're, when you're ripping up the ground and, and you don't really know how old the stuff is and what's underneath. So I think that that is a wonderful uh agenda item that we'll continue to talk about. A couple of things on uh tonight, well, I guess really only one other thing that I saw on here that the hack pack agreement. You know, we've been working towards uh getting the Performing Arts Center uh and engaging with a group who can do and help us bring in, you know, uh even some higher quality performances, et cetera, to services to the public. So I think this is a good step forward and hopefully we'll be finalizing that agreement soon. Uh, now that the hack pack is opened back up again and we have been seeing some of the art displays, et cetera, and hopefully we continue to do that. Um, I, I did get a call today from uh the director of the regional director from the FAA. Uh, we're continuing to fight with that on getting the planes to use the alternate route. You know, there's always issues and, and we're trying to come up with plans of how we can encourage its use. But, you know, we have to all be patient. It's like anything else, you know, we have to get people to use it and then hopefully get more people to use it. Uh, I agree. I get a lot of phone calls on this, a lot of emails on this, that it seems noisier than ever and, and, and seems to have a much higher volume. And a little bit of it is we got a little spoiled during COVID, you know, because there wasn't as many flights. So, you know, we had a nice break and, and, and now it seems worse than ever. And, and also a lot of more people are working at home during, during the day and hear it more than, than aware, than they were aware of when they were out working. But there's no excuse for us to not continue to log those complaints so that we have proof of that and we continue to, again, push that issue to get this alternate flight path used. Um, as far as the, the, the conversation about the Zoom meetings, uh, you know, we looked at the, the new, the new cases coming in from the health department. And I'm going to be honest with you, the, the activity was similar to what it was last October before the numbers went through the roof. Um, and we're praying to God that that doesn't happen again, but, but no one knows. And, you know, it's, it's kind of a, it really is a numbers game. When you see the numbers start to rise and stay rising consistently, you want to err on the side of caution. You know, we don't want anyone to be in a position where, you know, someone comes to a meeting and, and feels not well afterwards, even if they don't have the virus, you know, then you worry, oh my goodness, should I have gone out? What, why put ourselves in that position? It be, I think these meetings have been very successful. Do we really want to be back in, in person? Yeah, it's really nice to see people. And it's nice to be out together and look each other in the face. But I think we have to weigh all our options and decide where, where our priorities are. And I, I have heard from a number of people and we've gotten some emails, there's a lot of folks that do like this option that uh, you know, that they feel they couldn't come or they had, you know, uh problems at home or issues where they couldn't leave in the evening or get home from work in time to come, or they were just too tired to want to go back out again. And even if they're not asking questions, they're listening in. And so in many ways, I think we've reached a broader audience and i- it's something I think we have to continue to think about, the more the merrier, right? So again, thanks to those of you that did come and participate and we'll see you next time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank Erin for a great presentation about the sewer and stormwater separation. I wish a happy retirement to Ruth Kramer from the Building Department and I want to thank her for the years of service to the city. Um, we continue with the work in Pasea Street and Pasea Street already was finished. And we will continue all the way up to Polyfly Row. We continue with the working in Pasea Street. And one of the things that I want to ask the the city manager is to try to change the raiders in Ferman Avenue because they really don't work. I will not to see the radar, yes, like we got in Spring Valley right by the Bergen Mall. You know, they much better compared to what we got. And I am happy for Gary and company that finally we're going to get through with the pocket parts and they're going to contribute to beautify our city. Thank you for everything. Good evening.
Gary?
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank um our new city manager, Vinnie, for being on top of things and being very thorough. Also, um, looking forward to these pocket parks. Especially these little libraries. I heard a lot about it. Um, I, I did um see a couple of videos on them. I think that's going to be um a great asset to our city. And finally, I'd like to really thank Aaron also for a very uh well-done job on presenting the um stormwater update. And with that, um, Mr. Mayor, turn it back to you.
Thank you, sir, and I'm glad you're feeling a little better.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, yeah, my thanks go out to the BPOE, the Hackensack Elks Lodge, um, especially Stephen Gelber, who was in charge of their grants for his presentation on the little libraries. It's a great idea. It's a great concept and uh, you know, like I said earlier, I'm on board with it. Whatever the city can do, uh, we will do our best to make sure uh you get these grants. Um, thank you, Erin. Another great presentation. Um, you know, I'm looking forward for that uh green line or the finish line going up in uh being done by this time next year, actually way before this time next year and um help alleviate some of the issues for these folks in that neighborhood. Uh, the pocket parks uh is a great idea. I've said for years that one they picked out over on American Legion would be a great place for a park and uh they're making it happen. So uh, and absolutely it was mentioned before that they should have a say in the design and everything, and I, I agree with that. That's part of the environmental commission's uh um ideas and their ideology to, to help the environment. So uh, of course, they should be involved with the design of the park. I think that would be a good thing. Um, just to note, you know, many, many, many areas of our city flooded. Um, I heard mention of wards before. Well, we have five wards and first, second, third, fourth, and fifth all had extensive and tremendous amount of flooding. Unlike I've never seen before. And I realize that one area over there, um just west of Railroad Avenue floods on a regular basis and it definitely is a, a problem area. And that's why it's being addressed through the uh stormwater job that's coming up your way. And we are committed to continue to move forward with flood mitigation throughout the city. It's not just uh, not just there because there's other areas that flood too. Gentleman spoke to before about Coles Brook. And uh that's being looked at. Make sure that uh, you know, Brook is, is kept clean, though I got to be honest with you, I don't care if it was squeaky clean, if you had that kind of water, you're still going to have flooding. But uh, you know, it was mentioned from Erin, who is an engineer, that this would be considered what they call a five-hundred-year storm. So nobody in our lifetime has seen the likes of this before or our parents or our grandparents or great-grandparents or so forth and so on for probably seven generations. So uh like they said, worse than recorded history. And uh unfortunately, so many people, so many things, and I feel bad for everybody. Um, you've heard Deputy Mayor speak before to her damage. Um, she took a lot of damage in her house. She lost her basement. I myself have extensive damage to my house. Um, I still have a tree on my house. I'm trying to get off of there. But uh, yeah, it's not been fun for anybody, but uh we're working on it and it's a citywide issue. It's not just one, one area, though some areas are worse than others. It's a citywide issue that we need to be concerned about. Um, other good news is uh the docket tonight, the Prox Prospect Avenue Mid Block Crosswalk Design has been uh given to Neglia, so we'll move forward with that. I'm looking forward to this hack pack resolution because it'll be a group of uh well-known people throughout the community helping to bring an ax, fundraise, raise money, work with Greg Leosie, who does a great job with all of his stuff that he does with local theater and uh stuff of that nature. And um I'm hoping that everybody's just works together to make this the best little theater in North Jersey. So with that said, I ask that everybody check out the website because uh Mr. Crusoe, our manager, mentioned before the great upcoming events. There's some uh pumpkin carving contests, there's, you know, movie nights for Halloween and there's all, all kinds of stuff going on. So check out the website. And I wish everybody a wonderful evening and have a great week. Thank you. With that, motion to close the meeting?
Offer.
Check on.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Night. Thanks. Night all.